I can't hear you. Is your microphone muted?
It is, I'm sorry. It's now 9:30, we're gonna call media order. We did the pledge and the moment of silence already rolled, call Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Still here.
Ms. Houck? Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Hey?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Revoked?
Here.
Ms. Houck? Mr. McGinley?
Present. Okay.
10 of 11?
Yep, looking at the...
Wait, it's Linda, I'm here. I'm having terrible time with my internet tonight. I just opened a hotspot, I am here.
Okay. Please record Ms. Houck as present for the work session, please. We will do the mid-year financial report, I think that's maybe the most important item we have on our work session agenda. I would ask that we would have any questions or issues in regards to monthly division reports, if they would send an email, we'll take care of that at our next work session if there are questions or information that's necessary. Number three is in regards to the Division Street Bridge. This would be an intergovernmental agreement that will provide for the transfer of that bridge to Hanover Township, and I believe Wilkes-Barre City possibly is part of that. You know that the bridge was completed through the Office of Community Development recently, and this would be part of that agreement that would be transferred from the county ownership to Hanover Township and hopefully to the city of Wilkes-Barre. The fourth item is...
Mr. McGinley, let me just jump in here real quick on that Division Street Bridge, because as a citizen, I was one of the people, along with a couple of people, that came and asked Mr. Pedry to take care of that. So I just want to say that I appreciate that, getting that done. I appreciate him using the DCED money, I think is where that all came from. So, you know, kudos to the cooperation by the county and the two municipalities to get that bridge open for those folks. And I know I've spoken to many of those people who came, Jay Sweetra and a couple others who came to the meeting and implored the manager to take care of that, so I appreciate that being taken care of.
Okay. The fourth discussion is on the Flower Tent people who have rented that portion of land in front of the Wyoming Valley Airport several different times. They have a request in for a new lease for, I believe it's next fall, or the coming fall, I should say. If they have any questions there, please forward those and we'll make sure that they get included. And then five, six, and seven, you know, five, six, seven, and eight are all through Human Services, so we'll deal with those together. So the one, the only thing we're really gonna eliminate tonight is the, eliminate as far as on the agenda, but if you have questions or issues, we'll certainly get answers for, is the division reports, and we probably should have reversed the work session agenda tonight, do the financial report, do the division reports next week, two weeks from now, but that's how I'd like to handle it this evening in order to try to expedite our time a little bit. So do we have a motion to adopt the agenda with those provisions?
No, Sheila.
Saban, do we have a second?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radel, all favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Nelson Carey is, okay, Mr. Swetts, you're on deck, and Jared, you have a copy of the presentation, you'll be able to put that up, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Swetts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna read quickly, and not word for word, some of the stuff that was in the letter before the slide, because it is required from the admin code. So the one thing is, this will be posted tomorrow, we had planned on posting this tonight. I'm not gonna guarantee that we're gonna post this tonight due to the time of the meeting and it's still ongoing, but it will definitely be on my underneath budget and finance, underneath media report by tomorrow. The report itself talks about the general fund expenditures being at 61%, 75% of total revenue. We talk about county management, budget and finance projects that will stay within the parameters of the budget. So what does that mean? That means that once we get the CARES money, we physically have the money, we have our CARES introductory conference with DCD next week. Council voted for the new fund for the CARES money, the Fund 125 in the financial system. Once all those transfers are made, once we get the go-ahead from DCD, once we have all the accounting done, to move everything that was CARES-related out of the general fund, we predict it would be within the budget. Also, as was mentioned at the last meeting, that should clean up the budget to be in better shape for council as we go towards the 2021 budget. This way we'll have CARES-related items moved out of the budget and into one spot. So that's pretty much the summary of what's on the report. So on the slides, it's basically the same format as last year, so you'll see a PowerPoint presentation summarizing the media report. So if you go to the next slide, it's the Budget by Account Classification Report. This is the probably even higher than 40,000 foot level report. This is really what we used to provide. This is basically by category, and you'll see each category listed, you'll see versus last year. So you have your current, anything that's encumbered currently. Again, these are as of 6/30, so council and budget and finance made some changes in July. They won't all be encompassed in here because they would be in the July report and in your August report. So when you look at the year-to-date, the revenue totals, and I'm just doing the total right now, 114.4 million versus 113.5 in the prior year, with everything that went on this year, we're very happy to be at 75%. And only be, you know, we actually have, yes, more money than we had at this point last year, even with everything going on. So that's a very, you know, a very proud accomplishment. We have every, money is coming in, we are paying our bills, and I think we've talked about this. The majority of that, as you know, is the first line. So the tax line, this was as of 6/30, you can see that we were a little bit, about $2 million short. I can tell you as of Monday, we had 93.17% of the budget, and about 7.7 million remained to be collected. I think we spoke before that when the budget is passed, when the executive branch and county administration presents the budget, we budget taxes at 92%. So again, it's 93% of the 92% that was budgeted. I know we've talked about this multiple times, so I just wanted to highlight on that line. Transfers is one of the things we talked about during the audit, so if you remember, we talked about the audit being $3.1 million, and why did it show the $24 million? Well, in November, we got the borrowing at the $21.1 million, which included money for 911, the 911 digital upgrade of 19, over $19 million. That money was shown as revenue and received in 2019. That's how it was booked, that's how it was audited, and it's gonna be shown as expense. If you realize when I presented to council, when the auditors talked to you, and when you saw it in the paper, we talked about the 3.1 million, knowing that the money came in in November and then was gonna go out in 2020. So that's why there's a huge negative for transfers. It's not that we're going over budget, it's in the way it's presented. So we saw this huge increase of 24 million, which when we put out the press release and talked to the auditors, we talked about the 3.1 net, and you'll see this huge payment of funds going to the 265 fund, meaning we physically transferred this money that we got last year to the 911 project in 2020. Next slide, please. So this is just some of the revenue in a little bit more detail. Next slide. Thank you. So this is in detail of the mainline items. Again, the revenue line is everything that's in there. These are the top three or five items, there may be 30 items in this line. When we put the slides together, we try to take the mainline items. Talks about the current year real estate, the prior year through Northeast Avenue, and also the municipal realty transfer tax. So this just tells you the taxes versus the prior year, and just a little bit more high level, and just what I spoke about, that it is primarily current year real estate taxes, which everybody already knew. Next slide, please. So this goes into other income, and this is one of the things that's been brought up on numerous occasions. One of the things we're gonna talk about today, or is proposed for later on in the work session. So what is this $581,000? It's $210,000 of redevelopment authority money from a 2006 agreement, and it's the $343,701 of federal money that we got for the voting machines. So that is what the $581,000 is. That's why it's more than what's budgeted. We had no idea we were gonna get this $210,000, and that's what's in there. Next slide. This is all the detail primarily of things in the judicial services area, the different government lines, the civil services. So these are under the fees heading, you'll see it on the one-page summary report. You'd also see it when you look at the audit report, all the way in the back, there's a one-page general fund budget versus actual summary, and it lists the headings of fees versus fines, forfeitures, they're all together, taxes are together. So this is just a breakout of the, everything underneath the fees category. This is the detail, there's not really much in here, so we can go to the next slide, it's just the detail of the fees. Again, this is still more of the fees, as we said before, there's cremation, toxology, so this is almost all underneath either the courts or Ms. Holbert's division. And it was that the, we wanted them broken out so we could see what type of fees we're hitting the budget for, what type of fees we would possibly change the budget either up or down for, and that's why we added some of these lines for, you'll see in the middle of the page, the different types of writ of execution, just so we can budget better for it going forward. Next slide, please. This is the end of this part, and you'll see the licenses for the commission, copies, again, these are primarily from those two departments, and, you know, it shows you the amount for the current year versus the amount for the prior year, and you could see that we are, we're in a good spot considering everything that happened. 37%, not normally great for six months in, but you can also see the year-to-date, so you could see where we are versus last year. Next slide, please. This is just a little bit more of, now we're going into the fines. Again, they're in order by dollar amount, so you'll see the court costs and the fees for the violation ordinance, et cetera. You can see that we are well above on the 425.2 line, that last year at this time we only had $18,000. So all the revenue numbers to have 75% six months in, were very, very good numbers for us at this point in the year. Next slide. So this is some more of the slides, and I think the reason we have some year-to-date stuff is to give you some perspective this year versus last year. So again, while some of these percentages, and we've talked about this before in mid-year reports, it's not all linear, so everything's not gonna be a 50%. Some of the contracts we pay for the whole year in January, some of these are reimbursements, where we get the reimbursement at a later time. So it's not just all gonna be 25%. So the reason that we put the last year's number there is, hey, we're at 13% for state grants, PCCD, but this is well higher than we were last year. So there is comparison, there is detail, and it does tell, you know, council a more detailed report than a four-page report or a six-page report. So you have the detail in front of you from where we were last year, as well as where we are in the current budget. Next slide, please. We're wrapping up the revenue section here, you'll see that the rent of buildings number, again, the percentages are low, but if you look at where we were last year, we're either, almost every single one were higher than where we were last year. So that, as I said before, very proud of where we are at mid-year, especially in light of the circumstances. Next slide. And this is just the total slide for revenue, so this, all the things before were, again, everyone knows, you see the budget book, the budget book, even outside of the position budget is, you know, it's a two-inch-thick binder, there's hundreds of pages, this is not every revenue line, but these were the high-level lines that made up the revenue, so you could see what made up the 75%. Next slide. So this is just some of the expenses. So you'll see that expenses are more in line in that anything that's salary-related item or something that's paid, like either every two weeks, or monthly or quarterly, is much more in line with your normal, closer to 50% than the revenue. Some of the things are not, because of the fact that we pay them, like longevity, twice a year. But you'll see on the expense side, we're much closer to the 50% in a lot of the items. And some things like uniform allowance, we already paid the whole amount, or we already encumbered the whole amount for the whole year. Next slide, please. So this goes into the non-personnel, I think we all know that a large person of our budget is the salaries plus related benefits. We sit down and we give a one-page kind of summary of what changed in the budget, and before we tell the sections and what changed by either an increase or a decrease, we tell council that 80 to 85% of your budget is fixed, we have a large percentage of debt service, everyone's aware of that, we have salaries, we have related benefits, and a lot of our budget is fixed based on those line items. This is the, this is the non-fixed portion, which talks about some office supplies, cleaning products. Again, some of these that are at a higher number, we have gone through and cleaned up the cleaning supplies for purchasing, for anything related to COVID, that we can get this out, get the general fund reimbursed, and get this using CARES money. Again, we have that call next week, and that's still in process, but you'll see a lot of the things we talked about, seminar, travel, obviously we're not doing them because they've either been done remote, or they've been canceled for the year. Next slide, please. This is just some of the other things, video conferencing, the buildings, the court appeal. So again, we try to give some detail of what makes up these lines, I'm not gonna read every single one, so we can go to the next slide.
Mr. McGinley, let me jump in real quick and ask a question. Brian, did we ever get reimbursed from the state for the sheriff's services for the COVID-19 testing back in a couple of months ago when they did that? Did they ever send us our check for that yet?
I know it was turned in, I do not believe we received it yet. I know as soon as we finished, I think we were up there about a month, all the reports were turned in. I do not believe at this time we've gotten the money yet.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Swetts.
Sure, so on this slide, you'll see, again, some more of the expenses with the year-to-date, with your budget, and the bank charges, your licensing fees, a lot of these, if you look at the numbers, are again, much closer to the 40 and 50% number than some of the other numbers on the revenue side. So our expenses, while some of the discretionary stuff, especially regarding travel, seminars, office supplies that aren't related to COVID, obviously we didn't use as much, you'll see that they're a much lower percentage than some of the other line items, and some of the things we've seen in prior years for those same categories. Next slide, please. So this is more, more of the high level, I like to call everyone's attention to the refund line, I know we talk about that quite a bit. At this point, we have not had quite a bit of refunds, but again, as we all know, sometimes we get a bunch in the beginning, sometimes we get a bunch at the end, I know we'll talk about it during the budget process, but at this point, you could see, not quite as many as last year, we don't have a ton of money left over, but it's pretty comparable, so I think we're all waiting for that time when we don't have as much refunds, but it really hasn't happened. A few years ago, we had about 1.1 million, and now we've been around the 450 to 500,000 for the last three or four years. I know it's always something we talk about during the budget, but we seem to have, this seems to be a normal amount of refunds. I'm always waiting to tell council, either at the mid-year or during the budget, that, hey, this is the year that we finally got there, and it never seems like, we're not, it's not getting worse, but it seems like we're on a treadmill, and we're not making progress either. So just wanted to highlight that, I know we'll talk about it in future months' reports, and obviously it's one of the big items for the budget. Some of the, some of the cost of the institutions, we're just getting some of those now, as you were all aware, if somebody was working remote, or if a building was physically shut down, they weren't getting out their quarterly checks. So if we have anything, we're in process to get everybody made whole from our third-party institutions. So we're paying things as we get them, and we're well aware that we will pay the total bill, we're just receiving some of these invoices now with the shutdown of some of the services for the past few months. Next slide, please. So this is one of the things we talk about quite often, the debt service line, most of them are at 50% because we pay just the, just the interest on the first time, there are a few bonds that we do pay the full amount in May, this is the May payments, and then we have the payments in November. If you looked at the last sheet I sent out probably about two weeks ago, and when we were having the tax discussion, there's still about $15 million of debt service to be paid. The May is primarily the interest, and not very much principal. But again, just to give you some detail, some comparison, where we were last year and where we are today. Next slide, please. Just some items, obviously there's a lot of things going on that we've talked about, we have now given, I think, three, at least two reports on COVID. I've added it to my report, which we all know is the second meeting, so in the budget and finance reports, anything I have on COVID or COVID-related, I've added. But these are just some items that we've talked about the last few years, and just to give some comparison, just like in the budget, we gave the, you know, the current year and the prior two-year numbers, prison man overtime's always something we talk about in the budget, so that and the KPIs expense reimbursement were just two items that we wanted to highlight. Next slide. Again, I think we've talked about these before, and we'll continue to. The PPE and various cleaning supplies at the counting building as of June was a little bit north of 350,000. These revenue grants are all the grants that we've already discussed. I know there's more on the work session from the Human Service Agency, but these are the things that we discussed up until June. We did add the 28.6 million, which was July, but, you know, obviously it was a material amount, we made a new fund, a new role for it, so we thought it was important to mention in the mid-year. Next slide, please. And then just any questions, anything I can get you off the top of my head, I clearly will, if not, questions now or email, I'll gladly get to you or my team will before the next meeting.
Questions for Mr. Swetts? If you have any other questions that you, as you read through the report and review it, please forward them, and Mr. Swetts said that they would get back to you with some answers to the emails, okay? Anyone else? Okay, number two, we talked about the monthly division reports. If you have any issues or comments, please forward those, and we'll get answers for you. The reports are there. Number three, discussion regarding the ordinance for the intergovernmental agreement.
Hi. Yeah, Mr. McGinley, I'll just give a very, very brief update. The agreement is with Hanover, Hanover has it, I don't believe there's going to be any problems with it with Hanover. And the final, the final item that we would need to do then after the agreement is signed is to formulate the legal description for the transfer deed, and we're working down on that as we speak.
Okay, so we'll have to do the ordinance, and then you'll get the deed.
Correct.
Do the legal transfer involved.
Correct. Mr. McGinley, is Wilkes-Barre involved in the agreement, Ramelda, or no?
Not in the, not in the agreement, that's before council. I do know that there was an agreement back in the '30s about responsibility for the roads near the bridge. We have included that we will no longer, the county will no longer have responsibility for that bridge, for those areas approaching the bridge.
So, I mean, so Wilkes-Barre had agreement to own, did they own half the bridge, if I remember correctly, back way back?
That was the, that was the statement, it was a 50-50 deal between the county and Wilkes-Barre, but back when we put that $1 million in the capital fund, what, 2016, I think Mr. Griffith you signed it earlier.
Yep.
Wilkes-Barre came back and said, no, that agreement was never signed, they couldn't find one, so it was in dispute.
Okay.
So Wilkes-Barre is not involved?
Okay, very good, thanks.
I just had a quick comment, I did send newspaper articles from that time period back in the day from newspapers.com showing the consummation of that agreement in public record, in a sense, in, you know, publication.
Well, Mr. Urban, that was, you know, that was discussed at that point in time, but what I said was, what was given back as an answer at that point in time. You may be totally correct, but the answer was at that point, they didn't have the agreement and it wasn't signed, they said that they did not have an obligation, but, you know, that was a dispute, and, okay. About the lease for the Flower Tent, Ms. Crocomall, you gonna speak to that, or?
Well, I believe Mr. O'Neill was here to speak with, to speak on that, but...
That's fine. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, they submitted a request, I'm sorry.
Mr. O'Neill?
Go ahead, Eddie, I didn't know you were still on.
Yes, Tim and Silvio contacted me and would like to once again lease the property for a fall season. The days and the fees, as I submitted in my email request, are consistent with the last lease they had in the fall of 2019, at a daily rate of, I believe it's 45, 15, the exact figures there. So this is just, you know, another lease term, it's similar in length of time in the amount of daily and total payment to the county for the fall season this year.
Okay. One thing I remember about our leases in the past, Mr. O'Neill, is at one point early on, one of the early leases, there was an issue about they didn't break down and clean up at the end of the lease for a period of time, so I think we put a clause in there that if they didn't do that, they had to pay maybe $50 for a day, for something like that? Is that clause still in?
The draft that is before council does have a penalty at a daily rate of $50 per day for each day that they are present beyond the termination of the lease period.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Down to number five, it's Ms. Hill, or?
Yes, hello.
Go ahead.
Ms. Hill is present. Yes, so we've had this lease since October 2012, great location, we would like to renew it. It is $1,000 a month. As all of you know, AAA, our area agency on aging, doesn't receive any county funding, and again, it's a great location.
Questions for Ms. Hill? Again, if you have questions after you look at things, please just forward them, and so we can have the questions answered for you prior to voting session. Six, seven, and eight, fiscal year budget for Human Services Aging and, well, the DA's office will leave separate. Six and seven, Ms. Hill, or is someone gonna speak to those? Go ahead.
Yes, this is, this is funding related to COVID expenses, so number six is 410,000 for homelessness assistance programs, and then number seven is regarding aging. So just budget amendments to receive the funding and then spend accordingly.
Questions for Ms. Hill in that regard, those budget amendments? Questions for Ms. Hill in that regard, those budget amendments for human services and aging? Well, I'm sure those people will be happy to receive some funding to help them at this point in time.
Absolutely, yes.
And number eight is an ordinance submitting the 2020 fiscal year budget for the district attorney's office. Do we have anybody in the district attorney's office, or is someone going to speak to that? Again, it looks to me like it's COVID-related, am I correct in that statement?
It's Brian. I don't want to speak for the district attorney, but the information was forwarded to our office, and we just made sure it was in a consistent format. So I would like them to talk at the voting meeting, but we, you know, my team just put it together in the same format as the other information. So I don't know if anyone's on the call, so, but it's in the same format, and we received the information and gave it to council.
All right, I, I don't see any name that I recognize. If there is no one on, we'll make sure there's someone on for the voting session two weeks since from the DA's office to at least respond to any questions. If you have any questions that you want to answer prior to that, please forward those, and we'll make sure the DA has those so that they can be answered. Number eight, that was, and number nine, discussion regarding a resolution transferring the federal HABA grant funds from account with the number of, from other income to a different account for the general obligation bond principle. And I think, Mr. Griffith, did you provide this information?
Yes, that was the resolution that we, when, when council approved that bond, the general obligation bond of, I think it was 30-some million, 34 million, or whatever number that was, the, this discussion that council had at the time, as a citizen I sat in the audience, was any monies we received for reimbursement towards the election machines would be used to pay down the principal of the bond. So I, I put that resolution out there so council can go ahead and approve that 343,000 that's sitting under other income in the general fund budget and transfer it over to pay down the principal of that bond. So we, I, I don't, 343,000 is probably, you know, like a pebble on the beach in regard to 34 million, but it's at least something, and I think it's important to put it down on the principal, so we don't spend it somewhere else.
Okay. I don't think the bond issue was 34 million, I think it's more like 21, am I correct, Mr. Swetts?
It's 33,000, 33,305,000.
There was, there was 12 million of refinancing. We have, yeah, the county administration has no problem using this for what we spoke about. I think when we actually went through the process, we were going to ask for more than 33 million, and we did say any money that would be received, we'd use towards it. I don't think we need to change the GL number. I'm fine with using this money for the, the intended purpose of paying down the debt. I don't think we need to do it. But again, just like anything, if, whatever council decides, but we will not use that for anything else, we'll use it just to pay down the debt, even if no, most, no, nothing is done at the council level. Thanks.
Would you, Brian, would you just double-check my account numbers there, make sure they're accurate on my resolution, so we don't make a mistake when we vote on that?
Yeah, I can do that.
Thanks.
Okay, and number 10, we took care of in the voting session. Public comment? Members of the public, please?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, sir.
Ron Knapp?
Go ahead, Mr. Knapp.
I just wanted to reemphasize with what was just explained about the budget and everything, that I feel it's, it would be appropriate to thank those people that I mentioned in a letter, and, and appreciation for the bipartisanship in Washington to allocate those funds for CARES. And I don't think it's too out, out there to suggest something of that nature, because bipartisanship is a part of the next allocation of money. And with things, the way they're evolving, you know, bipartisanship is of the utmost necessity today with regards to what the human race is fighting against. And that pretty much wraps up what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Yes, Richard Manta.
Mr. Manta, go ahead.
Okay. From the, from the, what I saw on the screen, I think the county's in pretty good shape. Is that correct? As far as I can see.
Report will be up online tomorrow, Mr. Swetts indicated, so you'll have a chance to review it more closely.
Right.
I haven't, as closely as I'd like to, but I, you know, that's the report at the end of June.
So, so am I, am I correct in saying that we might have a surplus in the county?
I think it's all pretty mature to say that, but we'll see.
Okay, and, and, and another thing, you know, it's, it's, it's about spending money, you're spending taxpayers' money, and everybody's got to be held, held accountable for it. And what I'd like to say is that it would help the county voters, the county people, to let them go with that 10, at 10%. I mean, that, as far as, if that was my budget at home, and I, I looked at my budget and said, oh, okay, I'm, I'm pretty much floating, and I, I'm not broke, and I'm not going to spend a million dollars or 100 million dollars, or whatever they said that their shortcomings is going to be next year. Wouldn't it be nice to give the people a break? I, I, I keep reiterating this because the tax base in a lot of other states that, that I've researched about this rain tax, you know, everybody else doesn't, doesn't even use that. You know, it, it, and there's no line item in, in the budget for rainwater tax. So, I mean, it just, are, is the county going to be delinquent for the rainwater tax? Unless I've misread all those slides that he put up, I, I haven't seen anything for it. So, I mean, I, I'd like to have somebody say something about that.
Well, I, I don't have that answer, and, you know, I'll talk to Mr. Swetts and see if there's any answer.
If Mr. Swetts, if, if, if he can call me, or I can call him.
No, we'll get, we'll get something for you, Mr. Manta, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Other members of the public?
Mr. McGinley, it's Mark Raybo.
Go ahead, Ms. Raybo.
Yes, I want to bring up the notion, the option, as I brought up four years ago during the female inmate suicides that happened when there were options being discussed by the council at that time. And now would be a, a good time to explore the same options or different options. I would like to ask the, you know, the council and the Office of Law to explore the possibility of a prison board or a county jail oversight board or a variation of that to tailor, so it would be in compliance with the charter. So council member, so council or members of the public and the prison and the DA's office would all be able to hold open, open public meetings to ensure transparency about the prison operations, and that people can see that there's actual reforms being made or proposed. I think that is needed because that would instill confidence in the public that this, these tragedies will not happen, or at least try to be deterred from being happening instead of being ongoing and, you know, summarily dismissed by county officials. The public wants confidence in that the legal, the justice system works for them instead of, you know, holding life cheap and not adhering to their needs and their safety and their security. So I implore, I implore the council, the Office of Law, the county manager, the warden, to explore the options as, as they did four years ago, because now the status quo is no longer acceptable. So I ask again to do that. So thank you and good night.
Anyone else from the public? Hearing none, do we have a motion for adjournment? Ms. Radel, who's second, please?
Walter. Go ahead, Chris, that's fine.
It's okay. Very. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any extensions, none heard? Thank you, stay safe. We'll meet again on the 25th of August, and maybe on the 25th, we'll have some information from the Audit Committee that's going to meet next Tuesday. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Have a good night, people. I hope everybody has a good night.
Good night.
You too.
You too, Leanne.
Good night.